Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, May 15th, 2023. It's 5:00 PM. Thank you all for joining us. We have a few things to go over on our operational agenda for tomorrow night. First is a public hearing with regard to a land use amendment related to the southwest corner of Devil's Glen and Forest Grove Road. This will appear four times on the agenda, as will the next, the rezoning of the southwest corner. And I will allow our community development director, Mark Hunt, and city planner, Taylor Beswick, to go through this project, however you'd like. Go through all of it, I would assume, and then we'll follow your lead. Gentlemen, welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor. Yeah, Taylor's here with me. We'll try to give you the overview. We are going to start first with a presentation on the future land use map change. We do think that sits separately from the other case and probably needs to be done, regardless of what decisions are made. We think that issue needs addressed. So let's talk about the future land use map change that's in front of us. It's actually two map changes, so it has two case numbers, 23-013 and 23-021. This is at Forest Grove Drive and Devil's Glen. It is a future land use map amendment.
I think it is.
The applicant is E&amp;A Enterprises LLC. You should be familiar with this area. It used to be the old Barnstormer baseball field. You can kind of still see the outline of the baseball diamonds in that crop area there. They would like to change the future land use from parks and open space. They would like to change it to urban low intensity and urban medium intensity. I'm going to give you an approximation right about something like this, dividing that diagonally. The low intensity side would be on the west side, and the medium intensity side would be closer to the corner, closer to that busy Forest Grove and Devil's Glen road. Let's talk about the left-hand side of the screen first. Parks and open spaces is the current designation. We, based on our research, Taylor's done a lot of digging, we think that's a mistake, Scrivener's area, if you will. The land has never been contemplated as a park. It's never been part of a city park plan in any fashion. It's never been in any way brought to council for perhaps purchase, that type of thing. So we really think that's an error, and I'll show you a few more slides here that kind of back that conclusion up. I'll point to the ballpark site plan, highlighted in yellow here, a little hard to see, but I'll tell you, that basically says that this is a temporary use, that it's a C1 lot. They're putting the ball diamonds in temporarily, and they plan to turn it back into a commercial use when the ball diamonds go away. That was approved in 2000 or 1999, and kind of gives you an inclination of what the city was thinking, what the developer was thinking, that this was not truly a park, but was a temporary private baseball field until they could develop it further. We also did a lot of research, and I say "we," I'm probably going to point to Taylor, did a lot of research going back to 1973, the year I was born, nearly 50 years ago, that this land has always been contemplated commercially, consistently through our plans until 2017. In 2017, we think that our consultant saw the park area there, thought it was a public park, not a private park, made a mistake. We didn't catch it in staff in the map update. So all these are telling you is from 1973 all the way through until our 2017 plan, we were planning for commercial use at what is probably the top five busiest intersection in the city of Bettendorf. It is currently zoned C1. It would seem to me if the city had been planning on having it be a park, we would have rezoned it at some point, so the owners would know that. We never did that. It's never been brought to this body or planning and zoning. And it was C5 at one point. We had a change in code. C5 uses were absorbed into C1. Also would have been a good time to rezone it if we were going to do that. We never did. Now let's look at the right-hand side of that same screen we were on just a second ago. If we, if you believe us and think that that was a mistake that was made, we think a ULI, UMI kind of diagonal breakup here of those two uses makes sense. It matches the surrounding development, and that buffers some of the west side where there's some R1 going to go in, but it does put that UMI, that more intense user, at the corner, matching what's to the north and northeast. And the pattern of development would support that. We have one of the busiest intersections. It's getting busier all the time. Having some commercial services there makes sense. We want to buffer from these other areas. So those two cases in mind again, just talking about the future land use map change. We do have a positive staff recommendation. We also have a unanimous 7-0 vote from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Your Honor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions on the land use amendment as described? Left? No? Right? Questions? Okay, let's move to the next one, item, the rezoning discussion.
So this is five cases. They're not quite sequential, but five cases related to the rezoning. I'm going to do my best, Taylor, jump in. A lot of moving parts here. If you, again, bear in mind that there's a future land use map change that would have to occur for us to consider this, so let's have that thought exercise and just pretend that we're contemplating that future land use map change. This is what may occur as a rezoning if that map change were done. Same applicant, E&amp;A Enterprises LLC. They're requesting multiple rezonings. Rezoning is located at the southwest corner of Forest Grove Drive and Devil's Glen. No surprise there. Current zoning is C1 and some R1, because there is a smidge of R1 over here next to the neighborhood. They're proposing C1, C2, R1, and R3, highly conditioned. I'm going to say conditioned, I'm going to say at their own covenants to restrict some uses. So even though you see those uses there, C1, C2, they're going to be very restricted in what they could do if this were approved by this body. There's our current zoning. You see the C1 and then the R1. And I'll give you a more, a more close-up example of the proposed zonings, but this does a good job. C2, that's hash marked, because we're going to have a lot of restrictions on that C2. That's going to be commercial type C2, but it's going to have no gas station. That's the one I think everybody wants to hear. But also, all of the other restrictions that we would have in our downtown overlay district would also be included in that, in any C2, any C area, actually. This C2 here, a little bit farther to the south, is reserved for townhome style use, townhome style development. The reason for that is that C districts for townhomes have a little bit better lot sizes and make the product a little more attractive to the consumer. Then we have some R3 here, so we can finish out this neighborhood that was, that was started some time ago and just hadn't been completed yet. And then some C1 up to the northwest corner. Yeah, go ahead.
The R3 is also for townhomes, so.
Oh, yeah.
Just have two different types of slight density changes. A C2 has a little higher density. We're talking smaller front yards. And then R3, a little less density, larger front yards. So it's a good transition going from the commercial, away from the corner, towards the R1 single family.
Here's a map that shows kind of a zoomed-in approach to that, to all those rezonings. The thing I want to point out, first of all, is that there's no rezoning going on here. It's the only piece that's not rezoned, lonely by itself, but that will be conditioned and will not have a gas station or any of those other, I'll call them vice uses, if you will, that we don't allow in our downtown overlay district. And the petitioner has put that in writing, and it's been reviewed by our city attorney. I would also note that the case numbers for each particular rezoning, if you're interested in keeping score at home, are also noted on this slide. And Taylor did a good job of just kind of outlining where the R1 and the C1, C2 would go. Again, we're going to finish out this neighborhood, so we've got this small blue rezoning. That lets these lots be of a normal, single-family home size, so we can finish out that neighborhood. And then the rest of this is proposed for commercial uses, which I can give you an example of what they're thinking they'll be bringing into town. I do want to talk about those restrictions. Again, this is like a conditional rezoning. They are self conditioning themselves, self-imposed restrictions. Here's that first document I mentioned where they adopted all of the downtown overlay districts, plus no gas stations of any kind, limited or unlimited. And they've also applied those same restrictions on that one parcel, this lonely guy here that has no rezoning forward. So he stays C1. Here's some renderings right now of what they're proposing. So townhome style development here, the single family, they didn't give us renderings for, but you could see where that would be. Some commercial style here, again, no gas stations. You have strip malls, little larger restaurants, so you have a larger product size. If you don't go to that C2 size, you're stuck with a 3,500 square foot restaurant, which is hard for some restaurants to make it. If you want to have a sit-down environment, you need something a little bit bigger. So that's why they sought that C2 status. We do have a positive staff recommendation. It was also approved unanimously at the April 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, 7-0. Taylor, anything else I missed?
I think Mark covered everything.
Questions on the rezoning? Yes, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So it's currently zoned C1. With C1, they could put in a gas station, correct?
They could put in multiple, actually.
Up to four pumps.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, so by changing this zoning, we're actually improving it for the neighborhood and for the city?
Relative to the idea of a gas station? Absolutely.
Relative to what it could be?
Yep. And we do have a positive review of the project overall as well, so, yeah.
And then my second question is, my understanding is, all these restrictions go with the land. So if this developer sells it to somebody, sells the development or pieces of the development to somebody else, the restrictions stay in place?
That is my understanding of the law.
And these are permanent until they come back to the council, and the council changes it?
Right, they would have to petition this body to change those.
Right. Okay, because I bring that up because I seem to recall, a couple of years ago, we had a case where there was some covenants or something, and I was told that, well, covenants expire after 20 years or something like that. And I don't remember the details.
If I, yeah, if I may.
Please.
Just elaborate a little bit. The condition, this is a conditional rezoning, and the conditions are part of the zoning ordinance, so stays with the land. If you, if council in the future wants to rezone it, based on an application that comes before them, you could do that, but it is part of the zoning ordinance, the conditions that are, that are being, you know, that have been brought for us, before us. They've been there in writing. Iowa code allows these conditions, but they are part of the zoning ordinance. And then a couple of other things while I'm here on these, on these cases. We have seven cases, and we've got the two land use amendments. We've got the five rezonings. All of them have public hearings, so I did just want to say now, and then we'll go over this tomorrow as well, because the process can be a little confusing. What we're going to do is, we have the seven public hearings that will take place consecutively. And then we'll encourage people to speak at any of the public hearings that they desire, but we will cross-file any comments made at one of these related public hearings and to the other public hearings, and would be part of the record in each of them. But we will do them consecutively. And then, once all of the public hearings are, have taken place and all of the comments are heard, then it would be back to council. So I think the idea is just to make sure that you have all of the comments from the citizens, and we know that there's a lot of interest in these, in this project and in these cases. You will have all of that input, all of that testimony, and then it will be back to the council for their decision. And one other procedural thing is that we do have a protest that's been filed, only applies to the rezonings. It does not apply to the land use amendments. And our initial analysis is that four of the five rezoning cases will have a supermajority requirement, because they hit the 20% threshold that Iowa code and city code require. So the only case that did not meet that, or that does not, you know, it's, they have until the public hearing tomorrow to submit additional signatures, in theory, but it appears that case 17 does not have the supermajority requirement, but the other four rezoning cases do, which would require six of seven council member votes to pass at each of the three readings, of course. It is an ordinance, so. So I just wanted to get that out of the way. There are some interesting procedural things with these related cases. We're going to do the best we can to do it efficiently and to get all of the testimony, but we just wanted to make sure that, if council had any question about the process, that we could clarify that tonight.
The change in the agenda really is to get all the public hearings together and really have it feel like one, let everybody talk at the first one, and everything they say is cross-filled through all of the public hearings on the same piece of property, so that they don't have to stand up seven times, say the same thing. And then, after it's all been said, you all will have the opportunity to talk to each other, just like we always would, and we can do the same there. Any comments you have on the first one, you get it all out, have the discussion, and then if you have different things to add with the zoning as opposed to land, you certainly do that too, but this gives it the feel of maybe one discussion after you have one, you know, public hearing.
Thank you.
Questions on the zoning or the process? Yes, Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chris, what does, can you help us define what the supermajority would mean in this scenario? Is it five of seven, six of seven?
Six of seven?
Six of seven.
Three quarters, which, six of seven?
Other questions? Greg?
Can you go back to the picture of the, that little strip that's, yeah, right there? Is that development with the cul-de-sac area, is that, that's a different development? That's got nothing to do with?
There's a relation between the two. Bush Construction is part of the overall project, and this site, I believe, was under Bush Construction. Taylor, do you have more details?
Sure. That is the unplatted, so, parts of Valley Winds. So you can, Cardinal Road and Blackbird Lane kind of end, because they never platted the second phase of it. So that's just the second phase, which would finish out Valley Winds. When it was initially platted, preliminary platted, just concepted, there was only lots on one side of that conceptual cul-de-sac, so by rezoning that little sliver allows to have a normal street with lots on both sides.
And then the yellow is townhomes?
Correct.
Okay.
And here as well.
The blue is a little more dense townhomes in the C.
I believe they are, their rendering show two stories at this point, that's what.
Okay.
Bottom right-hand, yep.
I noticed around some new developments where they're putting in three-story townhomes right next to people's homes, single-family homes. Don't care for that. And then the placement of the streets, that's not firmed up yet, right?
So that would come at the site development plan, but also the plating. So you're going to plat the right-of-way, and then the site development plan, both of those play off each other.
Okay. And I noticed by that picture that Devil's Glen is pretty wide. Is that going to be allowed for? I mean, there's going to be enough?
Yeah, I think we already have the right-of-way for Devil's Glen that we need for future expansion.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
And we do have that project slated in '24 or '25?
The widening?
Yes.
Right now, I believe, is in '25. Still a couple of years out, but we reevaluate that every year as we go into the fall.
Right.
And if that development did happen and force something, we'd look to potentially make a change if we had to.
That would be the four-laning from Forest Grove South to 53rd. Other questions? Yes, Frank, and then we'll go back to Nick.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, you mentioned things that wouldn't be allowed in the downtown, like gas stations and stuff, but could you expand on that a little bit, what those others are?
It's in this list right here.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Alderman, let me just kind of get it so I can see it.
The reason I'm asking you to do that is, is because I don't know that the people that will look at this on, can see these items.
We're used to, we're used to the code, so I'd be happy to just kind of enunciate those four uses. We have no food sales with gas, limited or unlimited, so no gas station. I think we put that out there enough. No auto service uses, no other business which would sell or intend to sell gasoline, so, or stopping the gasoline. Tobacco, vape shops, and CBD, that's a no. Tattoo, piercing, parlors, storage units, automotive sales, automotive service and body repair, pawn shops, title loan or quick cash operations, storage, staging yards, or service vehicle parking of any type, adult entertainment venues, and then permanent buildings with 50% or more of the retailer's floor space is allocated to sale or display of consumer fireworks.
Thank you.
Yes, Nick? Thank you, Your Honor. On that sliver of blue, that Blackbird cul-de-sac will be built out with single-family homes? Is that correct as well? Am I understanding that right? So that'll?
Yeah, that's so that you could actually have a single-family lot. You have to do that, because otherwise these lots would be too shallow.
And they'll be similar to the houses that are currently on Black, presumably?
Yeah, they'll be single-family homes.
Okay.
Exact model and type I don't have.
It's currently zoned R1, so.
Okay.
Other questions on process and procedure or zoning request at items 2P, 9 through 13, and 16 to 20?
Okay, let's move on to our discussion of the public hearing with regard to the conditional rezoning of 5019 Hopewell.
Do they have?
Yeah, they're not on consent.
City Planner Greg Beck just joined me up here.
Sometimes I do.
He did work this case with me, Your Honor. As you said, Your Honor, case 23-018 is Middle Road and Hopewell Avenue. It's a rezoning. This rezoning is also going to be proposed conditionally as well. Little background, the applicant is Ben Eastep. The subdivision is Hopewell Farms First Edition. Proposed use is church and townhomes. Rezoning from A1 to R3. We are talking about this lot here. It's currently in crop use. The west corner, roughly half the lot is going to be a church, Hope Church, and the other half of the lot will be townhomes. And then here's the rezoning exhibit, basically showing you the same area, but a more detailed drawing. I think this drone photography is neat, so I'm going to show it to you. It does, it does, you know, kind of show you the spacing of this area. I would point out, we do have this drainage way. This is a constraint on the property. This drainage way has to be, has to have a boundary of 50 feet from the top of the creek. So whoever develops gets pinched both from this drainage way and then from the edges of the property. They get squished towards the center. And I think that's going to explain some of the drawings that you're going to see in the future here in this presentation. I would also note that there's a very similar subdivision with very similar product. Actually, the same builder is contemplated going on right here, just to the, just to the south. And then you're very familiar with this Hopewell intersection. The future land use and comprehensive plan shows this as urban medium intensity. That's where your church would go. Urban low intensity for use where your townhomes would go. That's great. That matches and would allow the proposed rezoning. Again, currently zoned A1, but I would note, we have R3, and I showed you a picture of that R3 subdivision that was just being built. We do have R1 over here. This, this area is going to need some buffering, and we're going to show you that in this conditional concept plan, so that we do a little extra buffering along the R1 portions of this property. This A1 section over here is owned by the city. That's stormwater detention. I think that might actually be expanding to another pond down here, and then we have A1.
And Mark, just to, for the council's benefit, the A1 on the east side, which is the horse farm, I believe that the developer has the option on that property as well when, if and when it's time for the A1 use to cease.
That is correct. To my knowledge, that's correct. Here's the concept plan that went through planning and zoning and staff review. Again, your church user over here, remember that big swale drainage way in the middle? So you kind of have this property that's got this bifurcation to it. And then you have your townhome use. These townhomes are going to be similar to the windmiller townhomes to the south, and then you have the larger, taller, but smaller townhomes in the middle. This roadway has always been planned to, Butterfield Court has always been planned to connect up to Hopewell, so that connection has to be built out, no matter who develops this. We need this road to run north for traffic purposes. And then highlighted in green and blue, depending on your eyesight, is this extra buffer area here. So we have 30 feet of buffer space, plus a 10% overage in plantings to try and provide some screening. So that's five foot more than they would have to do by code. That's similar to what we did to the south, if you remember that project. And again, that's replicated here, so you have that extra buffer along both of those R1 areas. 56 total units, I would point out, that's six less, six, six less than the petitioner originally brought forward. After they had their neighborhood meetings, they did voluntarily reduce that, and their site area, they're really half as dense, if you look at this calculation here, really half as dense as they could be. Here's some elevations. These are the smaller, style narrower, but taller townhomes. Here are the one-story windmiller-style townhomes. And then here's the elevation of the church looking at, was that from Middle Road, probably? Probably from the Middle Road elevation. We do have a positive staff recommendation. There is a condition that the future site plan must materially match the concept plan. I can just show that to you one more time. I did want to point out, there is no connection off Middle, so everything's coming off of Hopewell. That's probably a good thing. We have our standard conditions, and then number five, it must materially match the concept plan shown here. It was approved 7-0 by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 19th, 2023. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Greg, did I miss anything?
All right, questions? Greg?
So the townhomes that are closest to the R1, those are two-story?
This is a one-story townhome, one-story townhome on the outside of the ring, so.
And the middle's going to be the taller?
Yes, sir. And then two-story in the middle. Yes, sorry.
That's perfect.
I thought I messed that up.
Other questions? Yes, Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. From a review of water runoff, can you spend a little bit of time just talking about the process to which the rainwater is going to be collected and sort of managed through this development?
Yeah, I'd be happy to help try and draw some clarity on that, and maybe ask our city engineer or public works director to jump in. But, so that swale I talked about, this low spot that runs in and becomes kind of a tree creek line here, that all takes water off the site and will move it south to a regional detention basin that was built some time ago. I don't know how, I don't have a good drawing to show you of that, maybe on the aerial. I don't, it's too far south. But that's how the water will be conveyed. Right now, there is no stormwater in place. This is a tiled farm field, so as farmers will do, they tile it as much as possible into the swale to keep their crops dry and produce ground that's tillable. So there's no detention, no retention going on whatsoever right now in this parcel. That will change once it comes into our, comes into our stormwater code.
Can I add to that, Mark?
Yeah, of course.
So, yeah, that was a big topic of conversation in planning and zoning, kind of two key things here. One, we are going to require each of the sites, so the residential and the church, to provide water quality on their halves of the property. Obviously, that was not in our stormwater ordinance when this was initially developed. And then there is the large retention basin, the regional basin that Mark was referring to, that is just west of Hugo and just north of 53rd. That actually provides retention for basically everything that's developed, south of Hopewell, east of Middle, and north of 53rd. So none of the downstream additions have their own individual ponds. We do have a very large city-owned detention basin that was built originally, I think, in '94, '95, somewhere in there, and then was retrofitted in 2013, was enlarged and brought up to current standards, so that you'll have kind of a dual-purpose system there. The water quality, I think, is probably the biggest benefit, because you don't have any detention upstream, and there was a few residents that lived right along the creek end that had some debris that washed down from that big rain that happened a couple weeks before that. And then something else to point out is that, once that property to the north develops, they'll have to provide detention onsite. Ideally, we would like to build another regional basin immediately north of this that'll provide even more protection for them.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So to follow up on that, with that swale, have we, are we aware that that's ever flooded, flooded to a, to a wide distribution of the water over the whole land? In other words, we're confident that those townhouses there are going to be flood-free?
Yeah, so they'll have to meet our base flood elevation. They'll have to meet our code. This is the 100-year floodplain. That, it's actually easier to see in a photo. So this, this area is within the 100-year floodplain, and that delineation does not cover the whole property. It only covers a few feet on each side of that swale. But they'll still have to meet our building code, and they'll have to be out of the floodplain, and that's not going to be the issue here.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's move to the public hearing on the lease and development agreement for 845 State Street. For that, we welcome our Assistant City Administrator, Jeff Rider.
All right, let's move to the public hearing on the lease and development agreement for eight forty-five State Street. For that, we welcome our Assistant City Administrator, Jeff Ryder.
Thank you and good evening, your honor. Uh, I think I have a pretty good opportunity for the city council to consider this evening. Some years back, the city acquired the parcel at eight forty-five State Street. It was a abandoned gas station. And, uh, the city acquired it as a nuisance property. Uh, since then, it's sat dormant. And there's been a couple of commercial requests, but we've deliberated over those over the years, and they just, they're very in- intensive uses and with the traffic flow. It was pretty much deemed that this parcel with vertical construction would be unbuildable. So last year, we had an inquiry from the owner, uh, to the east, uh, the old State Street interiors, which is now Platinum Salon, who had inquired about, uh, subdividing that building. Uh, she has since put a beautiful salon in on the east side of the building, which, uh, Mr. Hunt, his staff, our Assistant Fire Chief Troy Sade and others on staff have worked with to get that, uh, to where it needs to be. And today, she's operating a very beautiful business, and they're invested heavily. The west side of that building or the suite, um, it's down river, she would like to put a restaurant space in there, a small restaurant, with a little bit of an outdoor service area. Uh, very unique use. Uh, we have talked her through everything she needs to do there. She's hired an architect, an engineer, and she's well on her way. But we are, we were concerned about some of the parking issues and some of the aesthetics, the ingress egress, et cetera, on that parcel alone. So when she acqui- in, in, inquired about this, um, she had also inquired about the lot we own and whether or not she could purchase that from us. And at, at this time, we, we really did not have an interest in selling because of the uses that we're, uh, we're using it for relative to flood mitigation, storage of our Lego blocks, uh, et cetera. It's became, it's become a nice downtown service area for us. So we weren't interested in selling. However, using it for a commercial purpose like this and adding parking, uh, seemed to be something we could work with. So we issued an RFP, excuse me, since it is in an urban renewal area, we needed to issue an RFP to, um, offer the opportunity to anyone. Uh, after that, RFP had closed, the only bidder, if you will, was actually Platinum Salon LLC. So we negotiated a lease and development agreement with that property owner, uh, next door to provide parking for her future use of a restaurant and the existing salon. Uh, uniquely, this is, uh, we, we feel a pretty tremendous opportunity because it is going to now in essence be a commercial use on public property. And it's going to provide a lot of benefit. Um, in our downtown overlay, there are a number of nuances and standards that we're trying to work to achieve, uh, whether it's through our Healthy Hometown Initiative, whether it's just generally for the public, but, public health and well-being. There's a number of benefits to doing this. Um, the property owner is going to remove a rooftop sign that was on the old State Street interiors building and exchange it with a ground-level monument sign. She's going to landscape her property and cut off three of the four existing curb cuts that are there today. So between our parcel and her parcel, there's four curb cuts. We're going to take that down to one, and I'm going to show you. Oops, that's Mark's. I'm going to show you, if I am lucky, her concept plan. Get it just one moment here. There we go. This is her concept plan for our parking lot and her, her, uh, building as it sits today. So along State Street, as you see here, there's currently four curb cuts. There's now going to be one point of ingress egress on the west side of our parcel that's going to service the entire area. The front will be landscaped. The sidewalk along State Street currently has light poles that are sitting in the middle of sidewalks, uh, thus making it not compliant for ADA standards. We're going to reconstruct the sidewalk, place the light poles outside of that sidewalk area, and make this a more walkable, uh, parking area and, uh, building next door as well. Uh, in addition, she is agreeable to allow us to work with her to stage our Lego blocks at this site as well. So when the site plan comes through for review, we're going to set up a situation where they can be stowed on the site so we can access those in the event of an emergency or a flood. Uh, so there's a lot of benefits in that regard. Additionally, um, in the development agreement, we did state that, uh, they would be required to pay any commercial property taxes that were assessed on the property. Uh, through our conversations with the county assessor, um, he has stated that since it will still be public land, he is not going to tax the land, but he will be taxing the improvements to the property commercially. So there will be a small tax improvement or tax benefit for the city as well. As such, with a, a development agreement of the like in an urban renewal area, when we do enter into these agreements, we do have to show a market rate exchange for the property. In this case, we're going to do a ten-year lease, a dollar per year. Yet the improvements on the property are going to be valued at over a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Those improvements will be ours in perpetuity. We will own them. So if or when the lease would ever terminate, this would be ours. So there's an exchange there, plus the other financial benefits, whether it be the taxation or whether it be the, the maintenance costs that we are no longer going to have to endure. Lawn mowing, um, weed preventative, things like that, which amount to about three thousand dollars annually that we're no longer going to have to incur. So there's some great benefit here in doing this, plus again, as we continue to revitalize downtown Bettendorf. We're going to get a nice restaurant amenity out of this, too. So what we have for you to consider, I know it's a short story long here, but what we have for you to consider this evening is a public hearing regarding a lease and development agreement for our property at eight forty-five State Street with Platinum Salon and Spa. And I would hopefully get a positive recommendation and approval.
Jeff, just to be clear for the council.
Yes, sir.
She's going to make the improvements to the parking lot.
That's correct.
At her expense.
That's correct.
Okay, just so that's clear.
Yes, she is going to make all of the parking lot improvements at her expense, which today, based on her bid from CDMI, which is a local reputable contractor, are anticipated to be probably a minimum of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but with costs elevating it maybe more. She will pay for those.
Jeff, there was some conversation when this, uh, came through about what if we decide we want to use this for something else? The, uh, lease itself is structured how?
So this is a ten-year lease with them. They have the opportunity to terminate if they would like. Uh, we would have to have some sort of very strong reason to terminate it our end, but we do have to give notification as well, uh, to the, the property owner in doing so. In the event that we were to terminate this, we would have to provide them ingress egress on her site, which she is currently going to be forfeiting.
Yeah, that would be easy if we would make that happen.
Yes. If I, just to be clear, it's, I, it's a non-renewal, right, that we have? It's, it's a ten-year lease.
So we're not getting out for ten years?
And that, that's right. And, and from my understanding, from the practical, the practicalities of this, was that we felt comfortable that, that for ten years, this was in furtherance of the urban renewal area, it was, uh, it, it made sense for, for the city at this point, and we feel like it will for ten years. After ten years, we don't have to renew. If we don't renew, we need to give her access because her, her only access will be through our property, and she's taking away those curb cuts. So maybe I've missed, I make sure that I'm correct because I just, I don't want to give it the impression that we can, can get out of this in year five. Um, we've, you know, we can always renegotiate, you know, as you can with any, any contract. We could, we could go to her and, and figure something out. And I, and I, I do think also, given the, the lessee and her ownership interest, if something larger was to happen, you know, a bringing together of a number of properties, that she would be part of that, that the, the lessee would be part of that. And so, and so that's another practical reason why we felt comfortable with the term of the.
We're very comfortable with this, this tenant, this lessee, if you will, and thank you, Councilor Curran. She is, she would be the linchpin in a larger parcel acquisition or assemblage because she, by virtue of her physical landscape, she is right in the middle of anything that would be on a larger scale that would be done. My guess is if parcels on the west or east of ours and hers were to become available, I think she's going to be first in line to acquire those. She has expressed those interests. Um, the other thing that, to Councilor Curran's point as well, that we have comfort in is we're not dealing with a REIT. We're not dealing with a private equity fund. We're dealing with a local small business owner. So the conversations are very, um, local, professional, but very local. We can call. And if they have an interest or we would have an interest, I think we could negotiate a way around or a way to work with this. Um, it would not be a very difficult or contentious arrangement.
Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, you mentioned the sidewalk, so we're going to end up with a five-foot standard sidewalk?
Actually, it'll be larger based on our downtown overlay standards. I believe the minimum is six feet, so it'll be a minimum of at least six feet.
Is it going to be right adjacent to the curb or are we going to have a boulevard?
We'll work that out in the site plan. Um, we haven't got that far yet. We want to look at the, the best arrangement for the lighting and the sidewalk. So we'll make that happen in the site plan phase.
Okay, good, because, uh, I express concern because I know that, uh, State Street there is a wide street, and in the wintertime, it frequently ends up, in the current situation, that the windrow of snow ends up right in the middle of the sidewalk. And the sidewalk is therefore unusable. Uh, not that there's a lot of
Right.
foot traffic right there right now, but as, as you, uh, continue to, uh, promote healthy hometown, why we can hope that that sidewalk will be, uh, better utilized in the future. Thank you.
We'll have to look at that and assess the site plan when it comes forward because the amount of real estate we're working with is pretty, to your point, is pretty minimal.
Yes.
So we'll find the best arrangement possible.
Other questions? Okay, Scott and Nick?
Thank you, your honor. Jeff, do you anticipate the loss of curb cuts impacting any of the, like, uh, grab and go or any kind of a, you know, restaurant capacity that might be impacted with proper flow on this parcel?
Actually, I think that it'll work better. We, while this is only one point of ingress egress, we believe the safety benefits are going to far exceed the fact that there's only one. We, respectfully, I think we want to kind of slow down what is occurring there today. And what would happen, in our opinion, I mean, we, we've met with this, is you could see someone coming in on that west, zipping and getting food, and then jumping out to the east very quickly. And she wants to mitigate that risk, too, in front of her building. It's just, it's kind of a safety issue for her as well. So having the one point of ingress egress is altruistically going to slow things down, which I think is what we really want.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor.
Nick?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, Jeff, are we going to lose that, uh, and maybe I missed it, uh, the ability to store some of our, um, Lego blocks and things like that? Will she allow for some of that storage still?
Yeah, that was one of the, the primary caveats that we wanted to have in this agreement as well, is she's going to work with us on that. In the event of, like, what we just had, she is not only going to allow us to stow the blocks there, they're going to be there, likely on the south side of the lot somewhere. But she's also going to grant us access to that lot if we need it for service staging, et cetera. Whether it be in partial or full capacity, depending on the flood incident, things like that, we're going to have access to that lot as part of our agreement.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Your favorite number eight? We'll, we'll explain that to you later. You were doing figure eights.
Figured, figure eight thing.
Figure eights around these two, subconsciously the whole time.
I'll turn it to a six, your honor.
Any other questions here? Okay. Thank you very much, Jeff. Let's move to our discussion of our public hearing regarding our, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget amendment. For that, we welcome our Director of Finance, Jason Shat. Jason, welcome.
Thank you, your honor, and I'll ask you to forgive me while I pull up my presentation. A busy night at the presentation desk.
Yeah, a lot of movement.
As most of you know, and, uh, can recall that, uh, the state allows for cities to adopt budget amendment, uh, budget amendment no later than May thirty-first of each year, uh, for the purposes of reallocating resources, appropriating the expenditure of, of non-property tax resources that maybe weren't anticipated in the budget or fund balances, uh, and moving, um, budgets between programs within the general fund, say from culture and recreation to, uh, public safety, something like that. Um, so we take advantage of that opportunity each and every year, uh, so as to ensure that we're not, uh, exceeding our budget in any one of those programs. And that is what, uh, we have before you tomorrow night for a public hearing. Uh, since the adoption, and I would note, uh, we, we took a pretty hard look at the current year budget FY twenty-two, twenty-three back in January and February when we can, we were considering the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, this budget amendment actually, um, is an amendment to the original budget that was adopted in March of twenty-two. Um, so we've taken a look at this, and now we're just kind of realigning it with that budget that we looked at back in January and February. Throughout the year, uh, some significant events have happened that impact the budget and require some of these amendments, uh, the receipt of ARPA funding. The sale of the Life Fitness Center was not anticipated in the budget as adopted last in March of twenty-two. Uh, the disposal of Splash Landing and the landing project taking shape. And then Forest Grove Road, Middle Road project that, um, has flexed between fiscal years, uh, as construction has happened out there. So those are some of the things that have required amendment, uh, going forward. On the revenue side of the budget, uh, as you work your way across this table, you'll see in the first column our revenue categories, uh, then the original budget, the budget as we estimated it in January, and then finally, this May amended budget. Uh, the change, the very last column on the right represents the change between that original budget and the May amendment. You'll note that the change between the May amendment and the January, uh, budget is much, much smaller. But on the revenue side, I'll just kind of hit some highlights real quickly here. Uh, in the use of money category, this is where our, the city's interest and investment, uh, income, uh, is receded. And you, as expected, with interest rates rising for all of us, uh, so has in, interest rates on the city's investments. And we've been pretty aggressive in getting idle cash out into the market to earn a little bit of interest. Uh, so that's going to add about five hundred thousand dollars to the revenue side of the budget. On the intergovernmental category, just one line down, uh, we're amending this up six million dollars for a couple of reasons. The full receipt of ARPA funding, and then, uh, federal reimbursements on large projects such as that one happening out at Forest Grove and Middle Road. Charges for services is going up, uh, just shy of five hundred thousand dollars. A lot of that is in our internal service fund. So that's charges that we're charging ourself, things like the garage, IT, services that we provide to departments, and they then reimburse us for. And then finally, other financing sources, uh, again, we have, uh, ARPA funding and landing financing coming in. Uh, the sale of the fitness center proceeds would go into that category. And then transfers in is the transfer of, uh, the ARPA money from the ARPA fund that we received it in out to the project fund that we're going to actually spend the money in. Uh, so that's the transfer in on the project side. So in total, we're adding eighteen million dollars, uh, of revenue to the adopted budget. But largely due to some of those one-off capital projects and, and sales of assets and things like that. On the expenditure side, very similar chart, uh, on the far left, you'll see our expenditure categories. Either, these are state-defined, and we cannot exceed the budget in any one of these categories, uh, and remain compliant with state law. Original budget, estimated budget as of January, uh, moving over to the right, amended budget here in May, and then that change from the original. On the expenditure side, we have some kind of fluky things to talk about. First, uh, the fourth line down, culture and recreation, we're going up, amending that budget up eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars from the original budget. The reason for that is, uh, you'll remember, a couple of years ago, we removed recreation and community center expenses into the fitness center fund. When we sold the fitness center, those items now have to move back from the business-type category down below into the culture and rec category in the general fund. So it's not a increase in total to the budget, it's just a flip between categories. Um, a little bit of an increase in community and economic development, a little bit larger in general government. And that was due, let me check my notes just real quick. We have an increase in hotel motel tax, which increases our obligation, uh, to, uh, visit Quad Cities. And then we also had some staffing, uh, changes between communications, economic development, legal and admin that have added a little bit, uh, to the budget there. Moving down the line to capital projects, um, obviously here we line to capital projects, obviously, here we don't set a budget in enterprise funds for capital projects. So this is not the landing project. It's largely due to Forest Grove timing and things moving between fiscal years as that project proceeds. In the business-type category, the increase of four point three million actually has to do with the disposal of matters. What's left over is the book value, the undepreciated portion of that asset. And when we dispose of the asset, we have to book that as an expense, a loss on disposal. There's about two and a half million dollars, no, strike that. I think it's three point two million in asset value that we will have to write off our books, and it hits the expenditure account. So we need to have some budget authority to do that. It's not cash going out the door. It's not a true expenditure. It's, it's, it's an accounting trick to account for the undepreciated portion of that asset that we dispose of. And then finally, transfers out matches transfers in. This is the transfer of ARPA money out into the project fund for expenditure on the landing project. Changes in fund balances due to this amendment, in total, about ten million dollars to the good. But I'll take you down to the second table here at the bottom and talk about fund balances in key funds. In the general fund, we now anticipate to end with about eleven million dollars in fund balance there. That's roughly thirty-eight percent of expenditures. In the road use fund, two point eight million, roughly forty-eight percent of expenditures. In the sales tax and gaming fund, you've got about one point nine million dollars in each of those. And I always point that out just because those are, are kind of like discretionary funds. We typically spend sales tax money on capital projects and gaming money to supplement some of those amenity-type enterprises around the city. So it's important that we have a good balance there to fall back on. In health insurance, we're nearing one and a half million dollars in fund balance. We'd like to get that up towards one point eight at the recommendation of the consultant. And risk management, just shy of a million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in fund balance there. Again, these are anticipated, and that should say at six thirty of twenty-three, not six thirty of twenty-two. I apologize for that.
Jason, just go back to the health insurance fund. And we're required to have one hundred and twenty-five percent of the claims in that reserve fund, are we not?
Between what's in reserve and what we anticipate in revenue, we would seek to have one hundred and twenty-five percent. Our newest consultant has pushed us to even move towards a fund balance or a cash balance of fifty percent of expenditures rather than just the twenty-five percent. So I'll double-check my number to see where we're at as far as that percentage goes. But we're nearing, I think we need to be towards one point eight to two million to hit that fifty percent mark, if that's the direction that council wants to go.
Questions for Jason on our budget amendments? Okay, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Where does the four million dollar loan show up?
That will probably not show up until the financials of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So it doesn't affect this particular budget, and it really won't affect, it, it won't be a budgeted expenditure. It's just a change in assets and liabilities between funds.
So it doesn't reduce our fund, then?
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's take a look at our consent agenda. Thank you, Jason. Any item on the consent agenda? Any particular council member would like to discuss at this time? All right, then let's entertain, it's a short agenda, obviously. Let's entertain a motion to approve all those items for consideration on consent tomorrow evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any items to be added by council this evening?
I would like a quick update from Decker on the landing. You had asked to speak on that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, I think I informed the council, but when we did our visit up at, in Des Moines at the Enhanced Iowa Board, the staff has recommended that we be considered for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. However, a requirement of that would be to have an individual contribution campaign, which we did not do, and most, if not all, cities have to do that. So tonight, we're launching on our Facebook page, and the Y would be doing the same.
Yeah, they've launched theirs.
That we would like individuals to consider a gift to that so that we can meet the requirement of the state and thus be eligible for the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We believe that if we have an individual contribution campaign, that'll meet the intent of the board, and we'll be back up there June first for that award hearing. So we're urging individuals to consider a contribution. It'll go towards, on the Y's page, because they're already a five oh one C three, and they're part of our project, and people can do the donation there. It will count, we are joint applicants in the, in the grant application, but it will meet the intent of the Enhanced Iowa Board. And so we ask you all to consider to do that. Share it with others on your Facebook pages so that we, the more the merrier. We say no gift is too small or too big, but we need a gift in order to meet the requirements of that, that grant application. And we believe that we will be successful then in securing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding. That was the staff recommendation to the board at the last meeting.
Questions for Decker?
Can you make up a kind of a little, I don't know, marketing thing that we can then share?
It's actually, all you got to do is share the Facebook page, and it'll, it's all there.
Okay, so that's showing on the Y?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Angie's done, Angie and her team have done a great job of putting it all on there and explaining what it is. All you got to do is share it, and it's very, very explanatory.
Okay.
Any items to be added by council? Jerry?
A question on the landing. Are, are we going to schedule a groundbreaking ceremony, or are we just going to have the contractor go to work?
Well, we got the, we got the contractor already going to work. They were on-site and fenced it off. But I would defer to Kim and/or Brent on that issue.
Yeah, at our pre-construction meeting last week, we did discuss groundbreaking, and we're tentatively looking at that Friday, June second, on the birthday celebration day. But details will be to come.
We don't have enough going on that day, so we thought we'd add one more thing.
Anything to be added by council? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll move.
Second. We stand adjourned. Good work, people. We'll see you here tomorrow. Bring a-
Pack a lunch.
No, we'll have lunch. We'll have some-